Lauren, I need to chat with you for like five minutes after this. About the elections.
Oh, oh, God, okay.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting, call the order, sorry, this City Commission's study session meeting of Monday, February 24th. All please rise to the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, we begin by acknowledging the land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chipewa peoples who have stewarded this land through the generations. We thank them for their resilience and strength in protecting this land and inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. With that, as I said at the beginning, this is a study session, so just so everyone knows that we are not taking any actions on any items, these are just discussions for tonight. And with that, I will turn it over to roll call for Benjamin Marandut.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Stanley, Commissioner Treadwell.
Here.
Commissioner Werner.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wilson, and Mayor Shamro.
Here we are with our barely quorum, but we get to go on. And with that, then I'll go to announcements from the City Manager.
I just wanted to say thank you for everyone who participated in our focus groups last week. They were really, really well attended and organized, and we did finally exceed, I believe, 1,037 responses so far.
It was 50 by end of, 1,050 by the end of Thursday.
Oh, okay, well, even better. So, we're, we're still encouraging people if they didn't know about the survey or haven't taken it yet, it's open till Friday. Thank you.
And City Clerk?
Yes, just some meetings to announce for this week, the week of February 24th, 2025. The Hickory Hills Advisory Committee is meeting on Wednesday, February 26th, that's at 11:30 a.m. at the Hickory Hills Lodge. And then the Historic Districts Commission is meeting this Thursday, February 27th, that's at noon in the committee room. As always, information regarding meetings is available on the City website. We are recruiting for a number of boards and commissions, so anyone interested in volunteering to serve city government and make things happen, I encourage to contact the City Clerk's office. But we've got opportunities including, on boards, including Arts Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Board of Tax Review Housing Commission, Human Rights Commission, Local Officers Compensation Commission, and the Traverse City Light and Power Board. And then just some miscellaneous community updates, the City's City Academy program applications are now available through the end of the month. City Academy is a five-week program that is free of charge and gives some insight into the ins and outs on city government. And we encourage anybody, anyone who's interested to visit the City's website, there is a City Academy section. If you've got a question regarding what is entailed in City Academy, I encourage you to contact the City Clerk's office. And then now through February 28th, the City Commission's ad hoc committee regarding Brown Bridge Trust Fund ballot proposal is asking for public input and suggestions on projects to consider for public improvements to city parks as well as improvements for accessing city parks. And the survey that seeks that input can be found on the City's website under News. And then finally, just a general reminder that the City issues a weekly e-newsletter, it's called the Babe Brief, and it goes to your email box, and you can get the latest scoop on city initiatives and programs by signing up at trevercityomi.gov. And then lastly, just a reminder to everyone up here to please speak into your microphone, and that's all that I've got. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Benjamin. And with that, we'll start with our first topic of discussion for tonight, which is the West Front Street Safety Improvements. I see the City Engineer Anne Pagano is up there ready to go, but I didn't know, did you want to say anything first, Liz, or should we hand it off?
Nope, we can hand it right off to our City Engineer. Thank you, Anne.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Anne Pagano, City Engineer. I'm just gonna give a brief summary to start, and then our traffic engineers from Hubble, Roth, and Clark, or HRC, are here tonight to do also a quick presentation. And then we'll take questions if you have. So, I just wanted to start with kind of a summary. On August 12th of last year, the City Commission voted not to approve a contract amendment with HRC to move forward with the design of safety improvements on West Front Street, west of Madison Street, where there have been several vehicle crashes in recent years. And I'm sorry that we weren't at that meeting to answer questions, but we're here tonight to provide more information and answer questions. Let's see, on December 21st, 2023, a vehicle heading eastbound on Front Street, just west of Madison, crossed the center line, left the roadway, and crashed through a fence at one of the homes near the intersection of Madison Street. Luckily, there weren't any serious injuries, but the incident had the potential to cause serious injuries to both the vehicle occupants and bystanders. In March of 2024, the City contracted with HRC to assist, assist with recommendations for safety improvements in this area. I included the safety study in the packet, which has a lot of information in there, but just wanted to mention there have been nine reported crashes in this area since 2019. Three were eastbound, and six were westbound, and of those nine, six of them were, excuse me, runoff-the-road crashes.
Sorry, I'll fiddle with the case when you're.
So of the six runoff-the-road crashes, one of them was eastbound. And there likely have been more crashes that have been unreported, as one of the residents that's here this evening mentioned that he had seen a vehicle spin out recently, which was likely not reported because they, you know, nobody was hurt and they just drove away. So this happens probably more often than we know. The safety study prepared by HRC was submitted to the City in July 2024 with recommendations for safety improvements, including a guardrail in the right-of-way in front of the homes located west of the intersection where most of the crashes have occurred. Both engineering staff and HRC traffic engineers recommend that the improvements be implemented to decrease the chances of serious injury occurring in this area, and improving the safety for both the vehicle passengers, pedestrians, and bystanders. I also wanted to point out, there are a few other locations in the City where guardrail is installed, and I included photos of those locations in the packet. And if approved, which will probably bring it to the regular meeting, the next regular meeting for a vote, but if it was approved at that time, we would use traffic calming funds for the implementation of these safety measures. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Cole and Jordan from HRC, who will do a quick presentation. And then after the, their presentation, we're gonna show a quick video of crash testing for guardrails, so that you can just kind of get an idea of what, what we have to do to, you know, check things and make sure that they're safe, so.
There we go.
Well, that was quick, very good.
Oh, the magic touch.
Thank you. As mentioned, we're from Hubble, Roth, and Clark. My name is Cole, and this is Jordan Hankin. And we're just gonna go over a little bit more detail about this safety study. So as Anne mentioned, we, looking at this 500-foot segment to the west of Madison Street, along Front Street, you can see the curve there on the image on the screen. So, part of the safety study, we looked at different alternatives, countermeasures that evaluated the appropriateness, effectiveness, and cost of the recommendation. These mainly focused on signing upgrades, some dynamic signs, pavement markings, street lighting, roadside barriers, and geometric improvements. As you can see on the screen, some signing upgrades and relocations, pavement markings to say slow, and the speed limit for the curve, street lighting, and roadside barriers, which would be that guardrail were recommended.
Do you want questions at the end, or during?
Questions at the end would be great, yep. So, you can see up here a full crash analysis of the nine crashes that were mentioned, one being a suspected minor injury, one possible injury, with seven of them being just property damage only. Of those nine, three of them were alcohol or drug-related, with the other six not being alcohol-related. So you can see a little bit more in detail up on the screen, the nine crashes in question, with the five of them eastbound, with the last one bottom right being that westbound, sorry, the eastbound one that crashed into the fence into the porch of the resident here today. That was the one that had the minor injuries, the B-level crash. Of these, majority of them happened at nighttime, so in dark conditions, with two of them during, in the daytime, and those were older people in their 70s in snowy conditions.
So currently onsite, there are a few existing roadside barriers. However, we'd like to call it attention that both these roadside barriers are not considered breakaway devices and are currently not meeting the existing standard for roadside barriers, because they do not successfully redirect vehicles who run off the road, nor do they help minimize the severity of a crash if they were to occur. Furthermore, the planters that are located in the median of this curve are not even located in a location that would assist a vehicle departing the roadway. They are not necessarily even in line with the direction a vehicle would take. And our recommendation for both the bollards that are shielding that utility pole, as well as the planters, would be to remove them as part of this project.
So, part of removing that is to meet the clear zone requirements that we have to follow as engineers. So we need to provide a flat, smooth, unobstructed area beyond the roadway. This, when we can't provide that, there is a list of requirements here, remove an object, redesign so that can be traveled safely, relocate the obstacle, use breakaway devices like signs, redirect vehicles using appropriate barriers such as guardrail, and then delineate those objects if we can't do anything else. So that's in order of preference, so obviously we'd like to remove the objects if we can. So the planters, the bollards, the utility poles, can't always remove those, same thing with the houses, but some of those we can remove, and the others that we can't, we can shield. So here, again, this goes into more detail of what those breakaway devices would be, so sign supports, light poles are not breakaway. So you can see that those have been shielded by the bollards. Same thing with the above-ground utilities, bridge endings are typically, you put guardrail endings on to protect drivers from running into them and getting seriously injured. Retaining walls and culvert headways are typically also shielded with guardrail. So, the house, the poles, and the other objects in the area, if shielded with guardrail, would redirect vehicles back into the roadway and protect not only the drivers, but anybody outside of the roadway. And then Jordan's gonna talk about the different types of barriers, and why we chose guardrail versus the other types.
Thanks, Cole. So, I'm gonna start on the right here with the rigid barriers. So you can see that is an example of a concrete barrier essentially. This type of concrete barrier would be used more so to shield a hazard, an extreme hazard, such as like a cliff drop-off, dam drop-off, or maybe high-speed on a freeway. Some of the reasons that this type of barrier might not be appropriate for this type of curve is because it's not actually going to redirect the vehicle back into the roadway if it gets hit. Doesn't deflect at all when the vehicle hits it, it's just rigid, so the vehicle just kind of slams into it. And then the ends would need to be protected as well with some sort of impact attenuator. And then looking to the left, we have flexible barriers, so that's an example of a flexible cable median barrier that, for example, MDOT uses on freeway medians right now. Again, with this type of barrier, vehicles are not redirected back into the roadway. And these type of barriers actually deflect quite a bit, between four and 11 feet when they're hit, and that's done to minimize the severity of the crash and protect occupants. Whereas in the middle, you have a semi-rigid barrier, more likely known as a guardrail. So, guardrails successfully redirect vehicles back into the roadway when hit. They're used to limit entry into hazardous areas, and they do deflect a slight amount, up to about three feet, but it keeps vehicles more or less within the right-of-way and also redirects them back into the roadway instead of continuing further off of the edge of the roadway. And then, we're gonna show a video at the end of this presentation of a crash test of guardrails, but there are also links to crash tests for the cable median barriers and rigid barriers, if there's any interest in seeing those as well. So, our recommended, our recommendation would be to install guardrail in the proposed location shown on this slide, right on the north side of the road at the curve here. The reason we selected guardrails is because they are most able to absorb the energy of the crash and reduce the severity both for injuries, bystanders, and potential pedestrians in the area. The other barrier types, as I discussed, are not necessarily as appropriate because they are either too rigid or too flexible, meaning that they either don't deflect and redirect, or they deflect and deflect too much and still don't redirect. So for this reason, we decided that recommending guardrail would be the most appropriate countermeasure in this location.
One last thing before we show the video, this area in blue is where that guardrail would be recommended to be placed. So if the vehicle is running off of the road in either direction, they would run into that guardrail, it would do its job and redirect that vehicle back in and protect anything outside of that guardrail. And then we can play the video?
I wanted to mention in this slide, that we showed examples of different kinds of guardrail, and in the upper right there, in the middle, you can see there's wood posts on that particular guardrail, so that's an option. And then also, we could paint the guardrails, doesn't have to be, you know, that steel-looking color. Okay, so, we're gonna play this video, and if you haven't seen crash testing before, it's kind of crazy and a little hard to watch, but there's nobody in the car, so don't worry, nobody got hurt. I'm just gonna play it for like a minute. Oops.
I don't think it's gonna show.
Uh-huh.
Sorry. I don't think the video is gonna show. Yep.
You can watch it later.
All right, one more thing real quick.
So something's connecting, let's hold our, cross our fingers here. Nope.
That's okay.
I'll, I'll send you all an email, so you can, a link in an email, so you can check it out later. Thank you. Okay, and everybody was asked to hold their questions, so I'll open up right now, does anybody have questions right now or comments?
I, I was wondering, just in terms of the current configuration of, of the roadway, does it meet engineering handbook standards for best practices? You know, I'm, I'm interested in, is the, is the curve an appropriate degree of, of curve? Is the incline, you know, within the realm of normal? Obviously, you returned some information that said that the condition of the pavement itself was very good. So I just wondered if you could comment in terms of the, the basic configuration of the roadway?
Yeah, and I might let Cole and Jordan follow up, but my understanding is when we looked at it, the geometry was according to standard, but there was some inadequacies with the signage. So that was part of why we wanted to improve the signage there. And then, the additional striping was to improve, just add on like additional safety, you know, implementation for safety there.
Thank you.
Yes, the road, as it's designed now, it meets standard, there are things you could do to it. You could super-elevate it, you don't typically do that, super-elevations, if you think of a racetrack where the road's tilted, you don't typically do that on a road of this speed. However, you could, it's just the benefit, you're really not gonna get that from it. The idea behind the pavement markings and signing and the guardrail is to increase that redundancy. So if someone does miss the first curve sign, they see another one, they see the chevrons, and if they miss all of that, they see the pavement markings, and if they miss that, they hit the guardrail and it redirects them back into the road. So it protects not only the people in the vehicle, but also gives them our guidance as they approach those curves.
And, and the recommendations, is the intent to get to a point where, where we have virtually eliminated the potential for off-the- roadway crashes? Is that the goal here?
The goal is to prevent them from running off the road in the first place, and then the guardrail is secondary, that if that doesn't prevent it, there's another set of barriers there to protect the people outside of that road as well.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mitch.
Yes, I'm not sure if you encountered this, but I thought it rather odd that we do have a sign saying that there's a curve ahead in the westbound direction, but not in the eastbound direction. Was that just an oversight in the past?
I'm not sure, but that might be part of what we're, you know, we're trying to improve the signage there, so we would be fixing any, you know, inadequacies in the signage with this project.
I'm just a little curious about how that emerged as a condition in the first place, since it seems to make sense that there should be more signage in the eastbound direction marking, I mean, the westbound direction marking that there's a curve there.
Well, I would say that we have a relatively new City Engineer, so I don't expect, I would say that it would take an act, a question of the entirety of the Commission to ask her to go dig into those files with how sparse I know her time is. So, we'll just be grateful that we're looking at it from a new approach.
Yes.
Go ahead, Tim.
For when this is brought back, I guess, request of the City Attorney, because we're being told things need to be removed, et cetera, et cetera, I'd like to get legal opinion to the City Commission about essentially liability. And if our City Attorney has concerns, you know, specifically about those planters, they've been there for many years, so just an opinion would be great. If we're being told that, oh, you, we as a city need to remove those, which in my mind then just reduces, I mean, that is traffic calming, so that with those gone, then we're just encouraging people to go faster. And on that point of traffic calming, did Hubble, Roth, and Clark put any thought into traffic calming, or is this all, you seem like highway experts, and that's fine, but this isn't a highway, this is an urban city street, and the speed limit is 25?
So, we deal quite a bit with local roads, so the traffic calming measures.
Streets, not roads, streets.
Streets. So, yes, traffic calming. So the pavement markings as part of traffic calming, so are the signs.
The things that actually like slow vehicles down.
Those do slow, slow them down. So in our presentation, you saw things called optical speed bars. What those do is they create an appearance that you're going faster than you should.
Like narrow spots, things like that, that physically.
Correct.
Get people to really slow down.
Yes.
Okay.
So, we, I mean, there's options for those, we can put delineators out there. But there's, I mean, really depends on how much money we want to spend out there to do that, and the benefit from it.
That would be a question I have, if the markings, clearly if it's too, markings are there to narrow, although we all know that if it's paint, we often don't get our paint updated till just before Cherry Festival, and then it's usually gone by the end of the winter. But it's what we can do. If, if this is a direction we're going in for questions of how we're going to handle this in the near future, I think that I would like to have us, and this can be on staff necessarily, on Hubble, Roth, and Clark, but what the paint cost would be, the guardrail cost, and then what I'm hearing is about structure versus, I don't know, is this, is the conversation or the questions leading towards, we should just reconfigure the street there?
No, I'm just not supportive of, to me, this is giving up. It's saying, yep, it's a highway, let's just treat it like a highway. It's a city street, and so I'd like to see something creative, not tearing the whole street out and redoing it, but something creative that acknowledges the urban context and the 25 mile per hour speed limit. This doesn't do it. This is, you know, all your images show highways. When you show the three different types of guardrails, things like that, to me, that's giving up. I'm not, I'm not that type of engineer, so I don't have the answer, but I know there are people out there that do have ways to treat this more appropriately. Anytime I go to other cities, medium, large-sized cities, they have bollards and granite blocks and things all along city streets, everywhere, every city I go to. And yet you're saying, nope, everything has to be able to breakaway, get rid of those planters, they're a hazard to vehicles, et cetera. Other places are doing it, so we don't have to invent the wheel, we can just see what other places are doing and, and implement something. But I'm, I'm not willing to just give up. My colleagues might say, yep, we'll follow the lead there, but I'm not going to support this when it comes back to us.
So you're, I'm just trying to clarify, because we're now getting into, we want this brought back to us, we've talked about it for a while now, we've had accidents here, and there's no concrete thing you're asking people to look at. These gentlemen have come from this firm to say, we study streets, roads, and highways, this is our recommendations, we didn't go with concrete because it was too hard, like a, some of the examples you just gave, and that we want people to redirect it in, because as we've talked about, we have ice and other things. So, saying, almost like American Idol judge, impress me, bring me something new, isn't giving a lot of good direction. We could spend another year talking about this. Is that your desire, or do you have something more concrete for them to look into to bring back?
I want something that's the urban context, and the, the westbound vehicles that leave the roadway, there are no houses over there, there's no sidewalk. If they can't drive according to conditions, why should we as a city try to protect everybody from themselves? Why put a guardrail there? Like, I could see arguments for a guardrail right in front of those homes, you know, for eastbound traffic, but even that seems like it's, it's giving up and not being creative. I'm not, again, I'm not the, the type of engineer that comes up with these ideas, but certainly, like I said, I've seen bollards and granite blocks all over the place. Those seem to be effective and, and well-used, but maybe we're not allowed here for some reason.
I have a question, I think this is more for Anne. We hear a lot from some people, the beloved planters that never seem to have anything growing in them. Are those affixed to anything right now?
I don't believe so, I think they're movable.
So, in theory, we could put something else there that's affixed, that wouldn't be as safe, that would meet some of the middle lane traffic calming, refocusing the eyes, as well as doing a guardrail or something.
Right.
The issue is that they're not affixed.
I think you could remove the brick pavers, put soil, plant, you know, shrubs, whatever we're able to put in the median there, and probably you have to irrigate. But that, that would be the solution, if you wanted some sort of vegetation there.
Or just anything other than, I think, I understand that part of the point there is to have some different heights and things to not just be a flat surface that drivers kind of speed by. But the point being is it doesn't have to be those particular unsecured planters. Okay, thank you for that. Go ahead, Jackie.
I wondered if part of the evaluation might include looking at changing the, the speed limit from 35 to 25 further up the hill. I know that that goes beyond the boundaries of Traverse City and might require some, some assistance from Grand Traverse Road Commission, but is that worth evaluating, do you think?
And just to clarify, are you saying like maybe at the light at like West Long Lake in that, yeah?
At the, at the light at Cedar Run, or?
To change speed limits, you have to go through a speed study, and doesn't always end up going down, unfortunately.
Yeah, that's set at the 85th percentile, which I, if anything, would mean that the speed would go upwards.
Never mind.
No, isn't it a terrible catch 22?
And then, the second half of my, my question really was for Lauren, that, that we get an evaluation of liability issues, both from the municipal perspective and also from the individual perspective.
So, I, I sent out a memo from, that was previously written, that I think is really pretty applicable to this. You know, when you're, when you have engineers advising you that things in the right-of-way are not to the proper standard, that is, you know, if something happens down the line, that will be an exhibit. So, you know, we can talk about governmental immunity, which the City has, and there are different standards and ways to try to circumvent governmental immunity if you're a plaintiff's lawyer, and that's fine, I'm not disparaging plaintiff's lawyers, that's their job. But, you know, what you have to think about is whether, whether you could be setting up a set of facts that can lend toward governmental immunity being circumvented. And so, there are certain standards for that, that I talked about in that memo that I sent, I think, last week. And so that would be the analysis that you'd want to go through, when you're talking about whether or not to, you know, take your advice from your traffic engineers, and whether or not to maintain items in the roadway that and whether or not to maintain items in the roadway that are not rated to be in a roadway. And I don't know how those ended up there. I don't think anybody that still works for the city and hasn't retired knows how those ended up there, so.
And, and just so I'm clear, I think I heard you say that the two ways in which that stretch of roadway is not, is inadequate would be lighting and paint markings. Is that, is that, did I get the right message there?
I think mostly the signage, the paint markings are just to improve safety. The lighting is also something we could look at in the future. It was just not something we were contemplating with this first, you know, implementation phase.
Thank you. Go ahead Mitch.
Yes, I understand that the planters are not currently just standard and that could open us up to liability now that we have that publicly known. I would be interested in what structures, materials, et cetera, could serve a similar purpose in the same location because, one, they are an aesthetic attribute. Two, they, as planters, they could theoretically have even some small shrubs in them, but they don't. And potentially that could be easier to maintain than grass or wildflower plantings that require staff to regularly be in that median. But I do see, yes, we have the brick pavers right there in the middle, but it serves as a visual distinction that you are now entering or leaving the city. So even ahead of the four-way stop at Fronton Madison, it symbolizes you are now from the surrounding township land into the city. So I would like something that could exist in that space that would be up to code, but visually distinctive, not just signage. It could be, maybe there's a different design of a planter that you could put there or some shrubbery or, I don't know if there's roadway specific art installations that could go, but something.
Thank you Mitch, that's a good point that we don't have to just stick to what's there with, but still have something. Any other comments or questions from commissioners at this time? I think this has been a really good overview for us to have and to bring back. And Lauren, you've got a couple of questions out for you that you'll bring us back when this comes back. And I think we appreciate the presentation here from everybody. Thanks for coming on this, actually quite nice Monday, so hopefully it was not a bad February day to visit Traverse City. And I'm going to let everybody know, usually for study sessions, it's, we don't always allow comments per item, but I know there's three kind of overarching, pretty distinct topics tonight. So what I want to do is allow for any public comment, because I know there's a lot of people who are interested in very particular things, public comment on one and two separately and then three and four, we'll get public comment together after item four. So if anybody has any public comment right now that they want to make about the west Front Street improvement specifically, please feel free to approach the podium and we're going to have public comment. If you don't, it's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for those speaking tonight, I'll just share the rules for public comment. Please, if you're willing, state your name and address, indicate if you're a city resident, non-city resident or a city business owner. We have a three-minute time allotment, when your time has elapsed, a timer will beep. And we ask that all language, be respectful to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, city commissioners. My name is Jeff Erickson, I live at 1214 West Front Street, which makes me a city resident, one of the five houses on the, I'm actually the middle of the five houses on the north side of Front Street. I had some prepared questions tonight, but I'm going to go off the cuff instead because the group covered a lot I was going to say anyway. First, I want to say thank you guys for continuing to bring this forward as an issue. This is a very important issue for not only me, but my family and my neighbors as well. I speak for the other four houses as well, who I've talked to about this issue, two of which you do not live in town full year, you know, full time, but the other two do as well and they are all in support of this issue, of this recommendation as well. I do want to clarify a couple of points I heard tonight, this is where I'm going off the cuff. First of all, again, unreported crashes. My home office looks at said planters. My bedroom looks at said planters. There are crashes, I would say, at least every couple of weeks that go unreported. They spin off the road in the middle of the night, they get back on the road and they fly out of town going 45 miles per hour up the hill, west out of town. So to say that this is nine over five years is far understating the problem right now. The second challenge is, I look at the planters, I'm telling you right now, there's nothing in them nine months of the year and even three months a year. They dry out pretty quickly to the point of irrigation mentioned earlier. So I'm all in support, as someone who stares at this as I'm on Zoom calls all day long, looking out that window, I'm all in support of something that looks much better than a guardrail. However, safety comes far before aesthetics for something like this. And I urge the commission to think about that when you're voting, hopefully next week on this issue. I think that's it. I want to thank you guys for the time. I am always available to meet at said corridor and stand and look when you're out of a vehicle and see what speed cars are coming at you and coming or going the other direction because I can tell you right now, they're not going 25 or 35 miles per hour. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. And, oh, go ahead, Justin.
Yep, city resident, Justin. So I did look at the packet and I did look at the recommendations and the portion of that angle that comes right there is, that is, you know, part of the County Road Commission. So any kind of signage up further from the city line would have to be something that'd be corresponding with the city County Road Commission. But I do believe that the, that the, that the packet in there is also a reflection on engineering and also the MUTCD, which is the manual uniform traffic control device. So as far as aesthetics go is, yeah, you can put something in the middle there and maybe you can put furniture of a giant cherry for a gateway for into Traverse City. Or anything else, but the guardrail is something that's going to have to happen. You know, you can have both worlds, having something aesthetic right there, but also having a guardrail right there off that front curve right there that was shown in. So I think that the, you know, with the four-way being there, drivers are not patient. And so they're not going to always obey the speed limit. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Any final thoughts for staff or people, it sounds like we'll be seeing this next week. Go ahead Jackie.
It just occurred to me, do we have the most recent speed study along that stretch? Has there been one? Do we, do we know what it showed, just to, you know, verify some anecdotal?
You mean the formal speed study or are you saying like even if they've like been monitoring on the signs that they put out that flash and things like that?
Any, any piece of data would be helpful.
Perfect, yep, we'll see what we can dig up here.
Thank you.
Thank you, good point. All right, with that, thank you everybody for that presentation. We're going to move on now to an update on Fish Pass and I'm going to hand that off to you first Liz.
Thank you Mayor Shamro. I'd like to welcome Dan Zalinski with Fish Pass. He's a principal engineer and scientist on the project. He's here to give an update on the project and welcome Dan.
Thank you for allowing me to give an update on the project. As I'm sure most of you are well aware, we're in the middle of construction and progress has been going quite smoothly. As mentioned, I'm going to give an update on Fish Pass today, but because we've had some new faces on the commission since, you know, the past six years in which, you know, myself or other representatives from the Great Lakes Fish and Commission or our partner agencies have come to talk here, I do have a couple introductory slides just so everybody is well informed and reminded of what the project is.
They do it to me too, don't feel bad.
All right, so, so really Fish Pass is designed to be able to find a solution to the connectivity conundrum, which is a term that we've coined, facing barriers on fragmented watersheds around the Great Lakes and around the world. So connectivity or just the free movement of water and the animals that are in the water within a river or between a river and its receiving water is critical to the life history of a lot of fish species and just general watershed health. But barriers in the form of dams or road crossings impedes that connectivity. And obviously, one of the most well-recognized solutions to this issue is just barrier removal. And that's what happened in the upper watershed of the Boardman Ottawa River, upstream of Union Street Dam. However, this can have unintended consequences for both your desirable and undesirable species when there's a presence of an invasive species. And this is what, you know, dealing with that invasive species is what brings together this connectivity conundrum and the decisions that resource managers are faced with deciding to remove a barrier for increased connectivity or retaining a barrier for invasive species control. And we feel that developing tools for selective connectivity, thereby allowing passage of some species while blocking others, is a potential solution to this connectivity conundrum. And it's hard to talk about invasive species without mentioning the invasive sea lamprey. So although the Great Lakes is home to well north of 100 invasive species, arguably none have had a more devastating impact on the fishery than the sea lamprey. This is a species that's native to the Atlantic Ocean, but it gained access to the Great Lakes through the construction of the Welland Canal and Erie Canal. Once they established populations in the Great Lakes, they contributed to the near collapse of lake trout and lake whitefish populations. In response to that fishery collapse, the Great Lakes Fishery Commission was formed and one of our duties is to be able to coordinate a control program for this invasive species. So a little bit about their life history. So they, as adults, they feed on fish on their blood and bodily fluids out in the lakes. They do that over a span of about 18 months where they will detach, they will cease feeding and they will swim up into tributaries like the Boardman Ottawa River to be able to spawn. Those adults will die after they spawn, but their larvae will stay in the rivers for about three to four years before they, and they're just filter feeders, they're not parasitic at that point. But then they will eventually metamorphose, swim downstream and start the process over again. And as, as you can see on the slides, you know, a single adult is attributed with killing about 40 pounds of fish in its lifetime and a single female can spawn or lay up to 100,000 eggs. So just a handful can make a big difference. So our control program focuses on some of that migratory life history and their larvae. So the control program uses lamparicides, which are nearly species-specific chemicals to kill larvae in tributaries. But we also rely on barriers throughout the Great Lakes to be able to block adults from gaining access to that habitat for spawning, which has the double benefit of also reducing the amount of lamparicides that are required. In combination, these two tools have reduced sea lamprey populations in the Great Lakes to less than 90% of their historic peak. And while it's been successful, we do acknowledge that there are, there are some trade-offs to that. And one of them is that the barriers that block sea lamprey from gaining access to critical habitat also blocks many of our native species that never evolved a reason to be able to jump over barriers. So finding a solution that allows us to maintain control of the invasive sea lamprey while having those barriers be more or less invisible to species that are desirable and native to the Great Lakes is, is, the commission has a strong goal in being able to achieve that. And that is essentially the mission of Fish Pass. At the site, we want to be able to develop tools to be able to provide up and downstream passage of desirable fish while blocking and or removing those that are undesirable. As you can see in the image and what you've seen already out on site, Fish Pass will replace the Union Street Dam with a new and improved barrier with selective fish passage capabilities. Once constructed, we will conduct research to be able to integrate a lot of different technologies and tools to be able to selectively pass fish. The site will be developed into a living laboratory with emphasis not only on academic research, but also on community education. And then, once we find the ideal solution for the fish community goals of the Boardman Ottawa River, which I will mention is, is not the purview of the Great Lakes Fish and Commission, that is a decision made by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources in consultation with the tribes and public. But once that solution is identified, we'll convert the site to a permanent selective fishway and then we'll begin to export the process to other sites. So in addition to just the benefit of invasive species control, improved fish passage and the natural aesthetic of the site, as well as improved reliability and wire conveyance and quality, we also acknowledge that the project provides additional recreation opportunities at the site, improved access within and through the site. It's been incorporated into city plans and we've integrated a lot of public engagement and content into not only the infrastructure that's being put in, but also how we plan to develop outreach and education opportunities at the site in the future. So this is just, gives you a broad overview of what Fish Pass will be once construction is completed. I'm not going to go over all the details here, but largely I'll point out a couple of items that are under construction right now, which is the Arc Labyrinth weir, which is controls flow into the bypass channel. And this is designed for, designed to be able to provide all the regulatory flood flows as required by Eagle and does so safely within a relatively small footprint. And then that water will pass through the bypass channel, which is a nature-like design. So it's going to be very similar to the restored stretches at the Boardman, Saban or Brownbridge Dams. It'll have vegetated banks with over 1,500 live stakes installed. It has in-stream habitat for fish as well as engineered log jam and improved access for recreational use. And on the other side of the river, which will be starting construction later this year, is the fish sorting channel. This is primarily where most of the research will take place. It's essentially a 400-foot-long, 30-foot-wide flume that's designed for adaptability in mind so we can quickly move around different technologies and assess how fish are responding to those in real time. Now, the research that will happen at Fish Pass is really inspired by material cycling. And I've probably given this analogy to this, to this commission in the past, so I won't get into all the details, but essentially some of the things that we can learn from that, because they have had to tackle the similar issue of trying to sort an assortment of things, is that we want to move away from manual sorting and use automated processes and also focus on attribute-driven sorting. So this is in contrast to just picking out one fish at a time or one material at a time, but sorting them based on common attributes that are either shared or differed among groups. And when I'm talking about the sortable attributes that we are referencing for fish, we kind of break them down into four categories. The first one is phenology, this is the runtimeing, so when fish are available, we know they arrive into the river and move through the river at different times of day, different times of year. And we assess that through a lot of annual electrofishing shocking, so we can identify with the changes in fish community and abundance. On that, and understanding that also helps us influence what types of tools we might have in place at different times of year to kind of focus them on the fish that are going to be available. Next, we have morphology, so this is size or shape, so using screens or traps to be able to collect fish based on their size, but also using more innovative tools like image recognition to be able to identify fish based on more minute differences. Then we also have behavior, which obviously this is the most distinct feature in comparison to material cycling because fish can respond to their environment. And there's well over 50 to 100 years of research on behavioral guidance of fish that we plan to lean on. And this is, this really relies on influencing the environment that fish are swimming through to effectively have them self-sort. So this means, you know, making changes to the water flow, introducing bubbles, sound, lights or introducing natural compounds that they respond to in predictable manners. And then finally, we have physiology, which in this context is just their ability to overcome either jumping over a small barrier, swimming at high speeds or in the case of sea lamprey, that they can climb out of the water on these kind of like studded, studded traps. And in this conceptual video, it just kind of shows an example of how we might pair all these types of tools together. So in this case, you know, we might start by sorting fish based on their size, using an image recognition tool to be able to trigger a gate opening for allowing passage or blockage, sort fish based on their ability to jump over barriers, swim at high speeds, introduce environmental stimuli like bubbles, sounds or light to have fish kind of respond differentially to. And then also kind of pick out where fish prefer to swim in the water column, whether it's near the bottom or mid-depth, and then pairing that with traps to again facilitate the either removal or passage of fish that are moving through. So that was kind of background on the project, where we are at right now. I'm sure you're all aware that contract suspension that was, contract that was originally bid back in 2020 was suspended, that suspension has been lifted on phases one and phase two, which is all the in-stream work, so the fish sorting channel and the bypass channel and the Arc Labyrinth weir. That construction started in May of last year. We've also been successful in working with partners, the Grand Traverse Band as well as the city, to achieve some additional funding to construct the project. And although things have shifted a little bit from the original construction plan, we're still on pace to have phase one and phase still on pace to have phase one and phase two completed by the spring of 2026. And you can see right here in this diagram that we're right kind of in the middle of construction of the Arc Labyrinth Weir, as well as starting the removal of portions of the existing dam. And for those that have walked by the site and you're curious kind of what you're seeing out there, obviously, one of the kind of entry points for the project is on the north side of the channel, or north side of the river. This is where the job shacks are, so this is where the entry point and all the construction staff and the Army Corps of Engineers that oversee the project are staffed. On the upstream side, this is where the, most of the work is going on right now. This is the, showing the upstream cofferdam that has been made dry by the cofferdam and dewatering exercises, and then they've started constructing, constructing the base layer of the Arc Labyrinth Weir. And the downstream side, this is where they've now started work in the last couple of days, starting to excavate some of that material out. And prior to the complete dewatering of both the upstream and downstream pools, staff from the Great Lakes Fisher Commission, as well as the Grand Traverse Band, went in and electroshocked the water to be able to remove any fish that were trapped within the cofferdams and just return those to the river. And then I've just got a quick synopsis of time lapse showing how the construction process has, has been moving along since the summer. And it just kind of shows how the contractor installed the upstream cofferdam via a relatively large barge. The cofferdam was installed relatively quickly without any issue. We had continuous monitoring of vibrations and settlement on all the neighboring properties, as well as the dam and the two adjacent bridges, and at no point in, during the construction were any of the allowable thresholds exceeded. You can see here now that the dewatering started to happen, and then just before Christmas, or the holiday season, contractor was able to get into the cofferdam and start removing some of the sediments in that cofferdam. You can also see the evolution of some of the different dewatering, and then the site prep work for putting in the Arc Labyrinth Weir, and the additional sheeting you see that'll be installed in about, right now. That is permanent sheeting that is encased inside the concrete, whereas all the sheeting that you see creating that dry condition, that'll all be removed when the project is done. And this brings us up to basically last Friday in terms of activity. Again, just an overall look at the project site. Now, moving through kind of the construction phases, as I mentioned before, the contract suspension was lifted for phase one and phase two. One, because that was kind of the early start of construction, it gave us a little bit more time to renew some of our funding efforts. Phase one and phase two, as I mentioned before, is a lot of, all the site civil work, so it's the demolition of the existing dam, construction of the bypass channel, fish sorting channel, the removal and relocation of the water main. It'll eventually include the pedestrian bridge install and the water control gates in the fish sorting channel. When we look at the phase three elements, which are currently under negotiations, this includes all the upland activities, so all the park features, the sidewalks, access points, the research and education building, as well as all the site electrical and communications, which is really just sending power out to all the light poles that are going to be installed on both sides of the river. As I mentioned before, with phase one and phase two, that was rebid early 2024. Our total for construction, phase one and phase two, was increased up to $23.3 million. And you can see here the sources of funding, majority of that was from the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, and then from the Great Lakes Fisher Commission, grants from Michigan DNR, direct appropriations from the state of Michigan. We also received the Dam Risk Reduction Grant in partnership with the city through Eagle, as well as the money from the city of Traverse City for $285,000 for a portion of the water main relocation. Phase three, as mentioned before, it is under negotiation, but we anticipate to be fully funded for that. We have $5.4 million from the original bid contract that's designated for phase three work, and we also have the additional $2.9 million awarded from grants from GLRI, Natural Resource Trust Fund, again, that was in partnership with the city, and as well as NOAA funding that we've received in partnership with the Grand Traverse Band, again, for phase three. We have estimated costs, and we anticipate to have it fully funded, but I'm not sharing the estimated cost because that's still under negotiation, we don't want to influence what those will be.
So really quick question, the NOAA funding we already have, so that's not contingent right now?
That, that has already been allocated to the tribe, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep, so the next steps are obviously to finish that phase three contract modification, so that although that work wouldn't be starting right away anyways, we have to kind of proceed through the fish sorting channel to be installed before they can start that work. That'll be the next phase. And then in the meantime, we also have a memorandum of agreement that's been in review by the same signatories as the MOU. So that includes the city, the tribe, the DNR, and the Great Lakes Fishery Commission. We're just waiting on the DNR's legal review of the MOA before we can bring it forward back to each of the signatories for approval. But essentially, this covers the 10-year after-construction completion, which is the same as the MOU, and it outlines the responsibilities to operate and maintain Fish Pass facilities. And we have, in addition to that, an operation and maintenance plan that's been developed and extensively reviewed, both internally and externally, and we're really just awaiting construction to be complete before we can complete that document. But within that, it essentially outlines the responsibilities of three, three kind of categories or elements of the project. The first one is shown on here in blue, these are the dam components, so this includes the Arc Labyrinth Weir, the bypass channel, and some ancillary features. And this, similar to the existing dam, will be operated and maintained by the city of Traverse City. And I will note that this is kind of a status quo, although the new dam does not have any movable parts, so there's no gates to exercise, and the debris removal will be handled by a contract with an outside entity to be able to maintain the debris room that's on the upstream side, and that will be in partnership with the Great Lakes Fisher Commission. And once we know how much effort that takes on an annual basis, we can approach a long-term contract for that. The research components, so this is the fish sorting channel, the inside of the research and education building, and all the gates. These are operated and maintained by the Great Lakes Fishery Commission under the direction of the Fish Pass Advisory Board, which has all the signatories of the MOU and MOA are members of the core group there, so that it's not entirely just the Great Lakes Fisher Commission doing what they want. There is feedback from our entire advisory board on how it'll be operated, and we do this in conjunction with city staff in engineering and Department of Public Works, so that, and, and in collaboration with all the regulatory agencies for any water diversions that go through the fish sorting channel. And then finally are the non-research components, so this is all the upland features. Similar to the status quo, these are all going to be operated and maintained by the city of Traverse City, and that just includes, you know, maintenance of the parking lot, sidewalks, and maintenance of the green spaces. For the project timeline, you know, I think the first time I presented to this body was probably back in 2016. It's been a while since then, but we are happy to say that we are kind of right in the heart of construction. We anticipate the site to be fully constructed and complete by early 2027, in which that'll start that 10-year research and optimization period. And before I turn it over for questions, I just want to also highlight that now that we've moved into construction, we've been a lot more forward-thinking in our outreach and communications with the project. In just the last six months, we've had numerous requests and interest in the project with hosting a number of site visits and north of 20 presentations to conferences, as well as a lot of local stakeholder groups. We've also hosted and participated in unique events at the Shed Aquarium. We also had the premiere of the Ottawa River Reconnected, which is a documentary about the Boardman Ottawa River restoration and Fish Pass. And then, looking forward this summer, we also will have the Great Lakes Fisher Commission Annual Meeting, will be hosted in Traverse City in May. And then there will also be an international conference on fish telemetry hosted in Traverse City in June, so this site's already becoming of interest both regionally and internationally. And also note that in the last couple of months, we've also gone through some hiring processes, in which we've hired a public affairs specialist. This will be Leah McCallum. She was previously a contractor working for the commission, she'll now be permanent staff starting in April 1. And then we also are hiring a fisheries technician right now for a six-month appointment. And just the interest in these two positions alone, in the last six months, we had over 80, over 90 applicants just for those two positions. So there's a lot of draw to coming to Traverse City and working on this project, so we really appreciate the city's continuous support for this. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and for those who haven't already seen it, you can use the QR code to check out the webcam of Fish Pass, which is live 24 hours a day.
Very cool. Well, as someone who's been here the whole time, it was still nice to kind of see it all in one package for once. Do we have other questions from any commissioners? Go ahead, Jackie.
I'm very interested in the funding for what I thought I understood was primarily unfunded, which was the recreational engagement and educational piece. And could you help, number one, could you help me to understand the approximate scope of that and the degree to which it sounds like that may be funded?
Yes.
And so we'll deal with that first.
Yeah, so, so when the construction was suspended, the elements, especially with the contract that's let through the Army Corps of Engineers, you can't just take pieces out and only, and transfer that money to like phase one and phase two. So we had to find separate pots of money for each phase as it was originally identified in that contract. So all the money that was assigned to phase three elements at the original bid letting in 2020 is still there, and that's that $5.47 million was, that was the original price for all the phase three elements in 2020. We expect that number to increase, and part of the reason why we partitioned it out into phase one and two versus phase three is that we could then go out and get the funding for that, that anticipated increase. And that brings in the additional GLRI, NOAA, and NRTF all fund those elements of the project. So we have estimates that put it probably a little bit north of $7 to $8 million. We have those funds in hand, and we anticipate, although we still need to negotiate what those final prices are, we anticipate that it'll be fully funded.
Great, so the $7 to $8 million for recreational engagement and educational is lined up?
Yep.
And none of it is affected by federal funding freeze?
That is correct.
That's great, cool. The other question I had, you mentioned a couple of areas where the, the city of Traverse City has contributed funding, I think you mentioned relocation of the water main, for instance. I believe in Leah's letter on February 20th, she mentioned the DDA also as a source of funding, and I just wondered, is that baked into the city numbers, or is that separate?
No, it is not baked into those numbers. What I present here is that is for the construction contract, so the DDA was authorized to purchase the land where the research and education building is, or will be. So they purchased that at a discount. I don't recall what the exact figure was. Hmm? Around $150,000, $150,000.
Great, thank you.
Just to clarify really quick with our attorney, that's still city ultimately correct?
Yeah, and I have to look at that, because $150 doesn't ring about me.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not trying to say that Dan is wrong, but I just want to double check how much the DDA is worth for.
I just, I wanted to clarify, because I know sometimes we get into that confusion that the only land the DDA owns and operates on its own is Rotary Square, and everything else is under the city at the end of the day, so.
Yeah, and the intent and agreement for that purchase was that it would be for the research and education building for Fish Pass, so there's, there's some naming requirements from consumers for that building, but.
Yep.
And any, any more information you can provide will be great, thank you.
Did you have other questions, Jackie?
No, that's it for right now.
Great. Any other questions?
Oh.
Go ahead.
In terms of communication with the, the landowners, particularly the residents who are along the south side of the impacted riverfront, how, how is that communication and relationship being maintained? Is there, is there consideration out of the project budget that's going to those folks? I'd love to know more about that.
So one, you know, one, we obviously have had ongoing discussions with all, all the residents, both on, on north and south side of the project, because we've had to have the easements at, you know, before this was even let, so we had all those discussions, and everybody was in agreement on moving forward the project. But at the start of the project, we had part, what's, it's actually contractually required by the Army Corps of Engineers to have a construction partners meeting. So we had meetings with representatives from each of those residents. So you have the Central Methodist Church, Rivers Edge condo, and then there's also the property at 305 South Union, right? Yeah, 303 South Union, which is property at the southwest corner of the parking lot on the south side. So we talked with them to find, to tell them, you know, discuss with them how the kind of change in communication would go through, so we had points of contact for each, each neighboring property, so that if things change on our end, it's communicated effectively and quickly to them, and they can delineate that throughout their residents or parishioners. And, and same goes for, from them back to us. And there've been, I would say, fairly good communications between the Army Corps staff and each of those residents. They had to go through and take video evidence of pre-conditions throughout all the residents, so everybody's, you know, was able to put a face to the contractor, as well as the Army Corps of, Army Corps of Engineers staff that'll be on site. And, you know, things have come up, like there was an issue with, there was a light that was on the north side of the, the project that was flickering one night, that got shut off, I think, within the next day. There was some issues about noise from one of the pumps within, you know, a day of them sharing that information with us, we were able to put a noise enclosure over it that took care of the issue. And we continuously share the vibration and settlement monitoring with Rivers Edge, because they've had, they were of particular concern over what those readings were, and none of them have exceeded any of our thresholds, so everything's been very open in terms of communication, and it's been going well.
Okay. And, and what consideration has been given to those partners, the Army Corps partners that have been identified?
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, has there been any compensation to, say, individual condominium owners at Riverview, or any compensation to Central Methodist Church, or, you know, it, that's...
As someone who lived through the Eighth Street construction, I don't think we really give compensation. I know that I'm not and others, and I don't think it affects you all, in this case, we'll give certain allocations if businesses can be proven to be very affected by a construction project or a project, but we, it's not common practice at all to say, sorry, we did construction or a project in your area, here's some money, usually.
And it would only be if access to that property has been denied, which the driveways to Riverview and the driveway to Central United Methodist are unobstructed.
As somebody who woke up with jarring teeth five days a week during the Eighth Street construction from the hammering starting at 8:00 AM, I wish they had been able to, don't dampen that the day after, but, but no, I appreciate the question.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, and we had some of those discussions when we were generating the easements, so like on the Rivers Edge side, one of their long-term concerns was potential additional noise from just more recreational use of the site. Their main concern was over people parking kayaks, so like when the, the liveries would have 50 or so kayaks set up, set out, they had concerns over that, so one of the things they wanted to have implemented was that a sign would be put at the new landing that you cannot store your kayaks right at the base of their property. So that was one of the, one of the items that they were concerned with. On the church side, I know they had some, they want to make some improvements to the kind of rear area of their property, so as part of this project, we're removing concrete for them and taking out and installing a new fence, I was going to go there anyways, but it was in, in cooperation with them, and that there will be some temporary need for the contractor to be on their, their parking lot to be able to do some of the work, and it's written into the easement that it's only, there would, we would be able to minimize the amount of time where a contractor is taking up some of their parking spaces to, I think it's less than eight hours per day, you know, so non-continuously, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Good questions. Go ahead, Mitch.
Yes, first, I like your presentation, I would have appreciated it if it was actually in the packet, but I assume that it can be made available to the public.
Good point. Could we also have it emailed out to commissioners, since we're missing a couple commissioners tonight, too?
Yes.
Thank you.
But I am a little curious, yes, I can see the work progressing day by day, but we did have a long delay thanks to legal issues, and there may yet be delays between... to legal issues, and there may yet be delays between material sourcing, weather-related contractor issues. So how much flexibility is there in the timeline that you have laid out?
So the construction schedule I showed you on here has a lot of that baked in. So the contractor is required to kind of build in those contingencies because if they exceed kind of time durations, they're penalized on a daily basis to have work done. So they have that built in. So some of the delays we've had for, you know, really heavy snow days, that was baked in there. So they've actually been able to get more work done than was originally anticipated in the winter. So what we had a little bit of delay in some work early on has been made up. But overall, largely Phase One and Phase Two is perfectly on schedule.
Okay. And then specific concern, both through the construction so far, and then you mentioned that there will be a contractor doing debris removal. I would like to, full disclosure, I have worked for the DNR. I do seasonally work for the, it was American Canadian Fisheries, now it's changed its name. My hat still says American Canadian, that operates the weir. I would like more communication between those entities so that you don't have debris passed from one facility, the dam catching it.
Yep.
To end up in metal grates that then it again has to be removed.
Yeah, yeah, so part of that was due to the, essentially the sedimentation booms that they had. So if they were doing any earthwork on the dam, they had those in place to be able to catch anything. And just debris built up, and the contractor was on a process where they would let the debris go every, it was like once a week. So, yeah, they, you know, there were some discussions about that. So as they get into the next year, when that would, when the weir would be in operation, there'd be more communications, yes.
Yeah, for most of the year, it doesn't matter. But if those grates are in place, either for the fall during salmon spawning or in May monitoring the sucker run or some other testing, then it does become an issue.
Good. Any other questions or comments right now?
Can't wait until it's done, and I don't have to portage my canoe another two blocks.
Yep.
It'll be nice facilities. Well, thank you for the update. We look forward to hearing more progress as it moves along. Thank you. All right. With that, we'll open up for any public comment. I did say I do it on this item specifically as well, so this is just for public comment on Fish Pass right now, if anybody has any.
Before you start the clock, Benjamin, I was watching this on my computer at home, and when you adjusted the microphone for that lady, it totally screwed up the visual and the sound. So it showed like the mayor speaking, but a picture of Commissioner Werner.
Thanks for letting us know.
Thank you. Rick Buckholler, 932 Kelly Street. I'm a Traverse City resident. I only have three minutes. I'd like to point out some things. They blocked off the auxiliary spillway, which roughly, let's say, is 20% of the water flow. And Commissioner Tredwell, a little while ago, months ago, mentioned that he thought the dam was going to overtop at one point, which wasn't true. But we had some flooding rains several years in a row. The question is, what's going to happen now if we have a flooding rain? Is it going to overtop? It won't blow out because it's got a sheet pile in the front, but I've never seen that discussed. Secondly, I'd like to point out, the city's now talking about putting in ethics policies, morals and ethics. And Commissioner Werner and Commissioner Anderson are or have been on the planning commission. Way back in 2017, 1819, and this is at the 30 or 60% design capacity, they came in front of the planning commission to see if this project was acceptable based on the city master plan. And the condo owners and the president of the Rivers Edge condos owner came out and were complaining bitterly about the location of the kayak landing being moved up right under their windows. And they blew them off. They said, no, we're not going to move it. The planning commissioner has asked questions like, we don't want hardened riverbanks. What's the sheet piling? What are you going to do about it? We've said, nothing. We're going to put in the sheet piling, we're going to put in cement riverbanks, and that's just going to be it. So I'd like to talk about tonight is, and the city planner at the time, and the city attorney never brought it up, Rivers Edge has a planned unit development. And this labyrinth weir is going on their riparian right, as is maybe this pedestrian walkway. So their rights were denied. They didn't even let them know. And this is the kind of work that they have to view for three years. When those condos first went in, most of the sales pitch was because of the view of the park, but it's going to be gone. It's going to be concrete. But this is the work that they have to watch for three years, and in the easements, they only get $1 in compensation for this. And this is from 19, excuse me, 2020, it's an Eagle document, and that's their permit to work in the river. Authorized activity, excavate approximately 6,935 cubic yards, which divided by 10, that's 693 yard dump trucks. Of that, 1,050 cubic yards below the high water mark, meaning in the water, that's 105 dump trucks, 1,440.
Mr. Buckholler, your time for comment has elapsed. Thank you.
Anyway, it's a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Buckholler. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back, and we're going to, again, for the next two items, they're Lot O redevelopment and the Bytnor-Woodmere properties. So we're going to kind of have those both discussions, and then we'll have public comment at the end of those two in this case. So we'll move now on to discussion of redevelopment of Lot O update. Mayor Shamro, I'd like to introduce John Stimson with Homestretch.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Mayor. I'm John Stimson with Homestretch. I do have an architect with me from Grand Rapids today, and we're going to bring him in in a minute. Just want to start the presentation with a little bit of a background on Homestretch and then move through. I've got about 20 slides on this, so I'm going to go kind of quickly. And it will be available to the public if anybody wants it.
And we appreciate you did have it in the packet as well, so we appreciate that always.
Yep. And to clarify, that packet's smaller than what you're going to see. So I added to it. I took the liberty this weekend to do that because I thought it was important. So since this past year has gone by, we've opened 12-unit apartment complex in Frankfurt. That's getting occupied right now. We have three units left. We have plenty of applications for it. There's 10 units on Carver Street, which you'll see are still under construction. I hope to have those occupied probably by March, maybe early April. We're taking applications on those right now. So if anybody wants to apply, please get ahold of our office. We partnered with Wallet Communities on Corners Crossing. It's 199 unit, 192 unit development, actually, not 199, in Blair Township. That is a good relationship. I'm working with them to procure building materials, playground equipment, everything that we can do to help the project move along. And we're meeting with the marketing team next month to put together a plan to get those units occupied. We secured an $8.5 million low-income housing tax credit for a project in Elk Rapids. We also received a $600,000 grant to build six homes throughout the Grand Travers area, specifically three in Lillaw County, two in Grand Travers County, and those are going to break ground this summer or the spring. So I've increased our capacity. We're looking to increase our office size down in the basement area. We've got a staff now. We've got full-time property management. Really proud of the progress that we've made, and the board of Homestretch is very pleased as well. Last thing, at the end of last year, we received this plaque from MISTDA. It was a commemoration or an impact award for what we've done in the area. So that's kind of small, but it's there. Here's a pipeline of our new project report. This shows the capital that we're trying to acquire and the number of projects that is in our new projects pipeline, if you will. Right now, we're needing about $38.5 million in capital. To date, we've acquired about 10.3 of that capital. So we're chipping away at that and making progress every day incrementally. Lot O, we're here tonight to talk about the progress that we're making on Lot O. It's been a year and a half of really trying to figure out exactly where this project's going to land and how we're going to get it up and running. We did have to partner with Wallet Communities, who we've also partnered with, I mentioned, on the Blair Township project. A really excellent firm to work with. They have the liquidity, they have the depth of the financial capacity to put the financing together. We are doing all the groundwork and the preliminary work, working in the architectural engineering, trying to get the pro forma so that it can be submitted to MISTDA for a low-income housing tax credit project, which is vital to this. We're putting together, as I said, a LI-Tech application to MISTDA, funding through MEDC and the Federal Home Loan Bank. So those applications are teed up right now and ready to go out this spring. We also are going to actually need a pilot to make this project succeed, and you can see the timeline there. We hope to be open in 2028. And I am asking also to exercise the extension of the one-year purchase option that was written into our contract. So just moving forward, I wanted to give a little bit of a background on the historical use of the property. Prior to 1884 and up until 84, it was used as a residence. It was just single-family homes. And most of the properties along Cass and State Street were all single-family dwellings, if you will. Over a period of time, it got converted into a boarding house. So Lot O was a boarding house up until about 1910, and it then was converted into a hotel. And then it was redeveloped as a gasoline station in the 20s. I have a map that I'm going to show you in a minute on that. And it morphed from three underground storage tanks for petroleum products to six tanks. So it really grew in size. And about this time in the 20s up into the 40s, there were a lot of gas stations around that area. There were garages. It was sort of the petroleum corridor, if you ask me, based on what I've seen in the maps. But there was some ingress and egress to the north properties that has been used historically over the years. And we can show that there was never really an alleyway that was appropriated for that use, but it was a fact that has morphed over the years since it became a parking lot, if you will, owned by the city in 1974. There's also an inoperable boiler on the site and has hydraulic heating for the sidewalk. It's not working right now. It's sort of defunct. This all then leads to an environmental impact. The historical use, as I said, of a filling station has potential for volatilization of indoor air quality standards that are problematic to the structure that we would put in place. There's a recognized environmental condition or a wreck based on the historical use. We did borings. They showed that there's volatile organic compounds. There will be radon gas that has to be mitigated and vapor intrusion. One good note was the noise level that was determined to be within range from 65 to 68 decibels. That was, that was a good reading. So the site does accommodate the requirements for the state, especially MISTDA. We'd also did ground penetrating radar, which indicated that thankfully there are no storage tanks on the site right now, so they have been removed. Here's a picture, or this is actually a map from historical maps for fire station preparedness. They map out what was on the sites, and these are valuable maps for the history. But you can see there's a, it's called a cottage hotel in 1920. This is after the residents. And then the filling station I spoke of in 1929, you can see the three circles up at the top there. Those are the three tanks that originally were put in place. And then from 1946 to 1974, it was an Amaco station, and they had six tanks on that site. And it looks like the building was relocated a little bit, but you can look around and you can see there's garages on both sides of Cass, City Hall at the bottom. Just kind of gives you a history of what the property went through, mostly an open piece of dirt with storage tanks for petroleum. But here we are today. This is the situation that we're having to deal with. There is a study that we did early on with the DDA to try to find out what's the existing conditions. And some of those existing conditions showed us that there's an encroachment up on the north side of the property. There is a heating apparatus that has been brought onto Lot O, so it's encroaching in the property line. We looked at having a access point to the rear parking lots that are to the north. But interesting enough, you can see that there is no alleyway from the north alley through these properties to State Street. That was never in the cards. In fact, there are no alleys that run north and south. They're all east and west. So this access to the property was a misnomer. But by virtue of the fact that it's a parking lot, it's public use, people in those northern contiguous lots naturally had the right to trespass or go over that because it's public property, if you will. But that's the existing condition. And I, and I just, I just wanted to demonstrate that that's something we're just dealing with. It's not, we don't like it, although we would like to have something changed, but it's not something within our purview to do that. It was stipulated within the RFP that we give consideration to access across the property. So we're honoring that. So what are the ramifications, right? There's a tunnel cost. We're going to lose approximately 2,800 square feet of our commercial space, which is about 30% of the total lot size. We're going to suffer a cost of building a tunnel, which is approximately $360,000. We're going to have to give temporary access or relocate those business vehicles that are operating on those northern properties. That would be during construction. That's a hardship. The commercial revenue loss is about $56,000 per year, and that equates to about $650,000 to $700,000 in actual equity or debt that we could raise at 7% for 30 years. We're going to have maintenance on that corridor. We're going to have utilities to deal with. We also have to have clipped corners for sight of vision coming in and out of that tunnel. Those are real site costs, right? We're additionally going to have to spend money on the street sidewalk with DTE to remove a gas line and put down a new hydraulic boiler, replace snow melt within the two corners. Those are just facts. I'm just pointing out the facts. Up to $1 million in environmental brownfield application for cleaning up costs and barriers for venting. It's actually not that big of an environmentally hazardous site. It's been cleaned up before. We just have to do a little bit more. It probably won't exceed $700,000 based on other projects that we've done. Then there's also stormwater collection. From that northern property, there is a, where you see the blue area going through, that whole back parking lot or the north parking lot actually traverses onto Lot O and then goes into a storm retention drainage out to the body of water. So once our building's put in place, we're going to have to also take on that volume of water.
Do you want questions at the end or throughout?
Oh, I don't care. That's fine.
So you noted on the last slide that you will be looking for $1 million or $700 in brownfield. Have you, and in your timeline for, that's kind of given a little later, have you checked that you will need a vote for that and factor that into your timeline?
We have. We're going to need the county to put in a brownfield application and partner with that application.
And then go for the vote after, before it comes to the city commission, though?
Correct.
Okay. Just was seeing if that was in your timeline. Thank you.
Yes.
A question on the stormwater. Like I haven't seen anything written either with what the city commission previously approved that you as Homestretch, as the eventual owners of that parcel, are required to take care of your neighbor's stormwater. Is there anything that our city attorney is aware of as far as requiring Homestretch to take care of neighboring stormwater?
I'm not aware, but I am not deep into the planning of this project as Mr. Stimson is, so.
Okay, so hopefully that's something you can grade in such a way that it's their stormwater, and they can figure out what to do.
Right. We have a plan on our site plan that's going to address that. Dusty is here, Christensen, he can speak to that.
And then similarly, with the temporary access, you're looking at the appendix or appended item in the email as far as access to adjacent properties. you're looking at the appendix or appended item in the email as far as access to adjacent properties. I don't know legally, like, does our city attorney read that as including during construction? Access has to be provided by Homestretch?
That's really a question between Homestretch and the neighboring property owners.
But we, as the city, drafted this language.
Right. And we've already closed. So the question of how Homestretch is dealing with the neighboring property owners during construction isn't really for the city to answer. It's for Homestretch and the neighboring property owners.
Well, we, as a city, put them in this situation, so.
And everybody signed and agreed.
We're done?
Once we've made the agreement and we've closed on the property, then, yeah.
And everybody signed on the agreement.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I think I could speak to that just briefly, though. When I put in my proposal, I stipulated that the cost of the land, based on the appraisal, should account for the fact that there is an egress, an ingress situation across the property. And I asked the city manager at the time, make the appraisal reflect the loss of value of that aspect. And the appraisal came back and I read it and it wasn't on there. And I said, where is that language? How are we going to negotiate the price? He said, you're getting it for half off? That's all you really should be concerned with. And so, you know, maybe I was naive at the point of time. Maybe I just wanted to get the project. I was excited about trying to put it together. My board was giving me pressure to execute. That's just now, as time has gone by, a fact of life for the property. And I think we're just trying to be neighborly and take care of a situation. And, you know, maybe the site's a lemon and we're going to make lemonade out of it somehow. That's, I think, our mindset. But I can appreciate what you're saying, that the city may have put us in an undue situation. I'm going to introduce Randy Peace with Integrated Architecture, and he's going to give us a little overview on the layout of the property.
Good evening. As John said, I'm going to share a snapshot of where we're at in conceptual design. So the next few slides represent recent development. As John mentioned earlier, we've looked at a lot of different configurations and iterations for this project, really with the goal of making it as successful as it can be. So what you see before you is the ground floor plan. So this is essentially the street level plan at State and Cass. On the right side of the plan is a commercial retail space. It's about 3,700 square feet, a little bit more than that. And it obviously has corner frontage. And then to the left of that is the, what John referred to as the tunnel. So this is the access passageway underneath the building at grade level. What we're showing here currently are two lanes, essentially one lane in and one lane out. Part of that, in doing that, was just it was beneficial for us to get structured on the middle, given some limitations with the building. And then to the far left, plan left, is the combination of the residential lobby. So you can, I think, see that labeled there. And then a resident community room. So this is a shared space for the 44 tenants of the building to use. So it's common space. The nice aspect of this is that it really creates, this in conjunction with the retail space, creates a very sort of active street front, active facade on both Cass Street and State Street. And then toward the plan top or the back of the building, there are support services. So there's building services as well as egress stairs that are finding their way down from the four floors above. Sure. Yep. So as John mentioned, the building to the north is essentially on the property line. And then there's some mechanical equipment that projects past that. And then it has windows on its upper floor. So we have pulled our building back four feet, so there's essentially an alley or more of an access way across the north side of the property that allows connectivity to the back of the parcel and then, of course, to the parking lot and the parcels to the north.
Is that alleyway the whole height of the building or is it just the first floor?
It is the whole height of the building.
How many feet? How many feet? Why did you say?
Four feet. It is four feet wide.
Might want to check with zoning. I think it might have to be five.
Okay. And we can, I think we have some latitude to pull that back. This next slide is just a quick conceptual study of a potential market on that corner. This was done on an earlier iteration of our plan, but I think some of the design qualities of it still ring true to where we're at now. If you recall from the plan that we were looking at previously, along State Street and along Cass Street, the ground floor of the building steps back about five feet. So not only are we set back from the property line necessarily to meet zoning, it steps back even further on the ground floor. And the benefit to that is it allows us to sort of make a transitional area. So if you imagine a market there, let's say a grocery, for the sake of argument, we are planning on having that facade open up or having the ability to open up so that you could have a bit of transitional space and start to engage the sidewalk at that point. So here we're showing the potential for tables and chairs, but you could also imagine a market sort of bleeding out to the sidewalk to a degree, all within the confines of the property line, but still kind of creating a bit of a transitional zone for the sidewalk area. And then floors two through five are all identical. So there are 11 units per floor, a combination of, I don't remember now. We have six one-bedroom units, four studios, and one two-bedroom unit on each floor. So it is identical all the way up. We are planning on 20% of the units being type A accessible units. So going above and beyond the minimum for that, really trying to open up access to the broadest range of potential tenants for this building. And then this is just a typical one-bedroom unit. So the building is very modular. There's an efficiency to that for construction, and that translates into construction costs. So really trying to leverage efficiency throughout the building, and I'll share with you when we look at the section of the building as well. But the one-bedroom unit on the left is what we're calling the standard one-bedroom. But the one-bedroom on the right is a type A. So with some relatively minor modifications to the interior of the unit, same footprint, we're able to achieve full accessibility for those units. And then this is a section along, essentially parallel with State Street. So this will be an east-west section where you can see the podium at the lower levels. So on the right-hand side would be the retail space. On the left-hand side would be the communal space as well as the resident lobby. And then the, I'm actually looking, wish I could point here. Can't really point. So I'm looking at the section on the right. There are two sections side by side. And then you can see the pass through the white in the middle on the ground floor, which is the access tunnel, if you will, through the building. And so with the, what we call the four-over-one, the four stories over the one story of commercial podium, in its current configuration, it complies with the zoning, albeit we'll confirm the five-foot. But in terms of building height and height of the tallest accessible floor, which would be the fifth floor, it all fits within the form-based zoning. And then some images of it. So these are some conceptual images that reflect the new, the new planned configuration and unit mix that we've been working on. So this is obviously on the corner of State and Cass. You can see that we are looking at really creating a dynamic and active first floor. So imagine parts of that facade being operable, so it could open up. You'll see that the columns that are on the perimeter at the ground floor, what we're thinking is that is a mass timber. So I'm going to go back a slide. What we're looking at is a hybrid mass timber system, so a CLT flooring system and then conventional stick frame bearing walls. So the modularity or the CLT lends itself to the modularity and vice versa. And so in terms of using the CLT, there's some benefits to us. It's a very efficient floor system in terms of its depth, so we can accomplish a lot structurally in a shallow depth. It's a rapid renewable resource, so it's rapid-growing forest that the CLT floor planks are created from. And then probably most importantly, at least in my mind, is the biophilic response of that. So in the units, as much as possible within the units will have exposed wood. So you get the exposed plank in each of the units, so you get that warmth of the wood and the natural material. And that carries through to the language that we're looking at on the exterior. While we're doing, we're not doing a true or a full-fledged post-in-beam mass timber building. We're doing a hybrid system. We're looking at the architectural aesthetic and the architectural language of the exterior to really reflect that intent. So on the ground floor, those would be mass timber columns that you see affronting the retail space. And then as you go up, really expressing that frame on the next three floors through the building. And then this is a view from the southwest. So you can see on the, kind of in the middle there, the tunnel pass through where the car is entering. And then lastly, from Cass, so this is the east, essentially the east facade. And then you can see the omelet shop to the north. Any questions about those before I hand it back to John?
Don't see any.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. I was going to ask you, tell you that we did design the units so that they can accommodate in-unit washer and dryers, right? Yes, we did. So they're big enough to take a washer dryer. I wanted to talk about the rents and the income because I think that's top of mind for most people when they're looking at what we're doing, what we're trying to accomplish. So with the tax credit, you can see in front of you the rents for the studios. These are including utilities. We've achieved a 51.67% average. The purchase agreement called for 60%, so we're under that conservatively. The capital subsidy per unit's about $288,000. Without that subsidy, these rents wouldn't be achievable. I know it seems like a little bit of a high number, but when you do low-income housing tax credits, there is a lot of extra fees than what I would normally do for my Beitner and Woodmere proposal. And you'll see that reflected in those numbers. But there are the rents. And those first block of studio and one and two bedrooms are at 30% AMI. That translates to about $12 to $15 per hour, if you extrapolate out $2,000 per year in work hours. I think that's pretty aggressive, but that's the way that the Lytec model runs. That's subsidized units. Then we have 50% units. You can see the gamut. Those are $18 to $20 per hour type of incomes. And then the bulk, the 80 to 100% is 28 to 30, and then 35 to 38. Those are Grand Travers County 2024 income ranges. So that's sort of the unit mix of what we're trying to achieve. And I think it's doable. That's a deeper dive than I normally would have seen on some of our other projects. So if you have any questions about that, I'm going to go to the next slide.
Sorry, just to clarify, because I'm reading the memo right now, too. So that, achieving that is going to take getting the RAP grant and the MISHDA-Lytac at 9% and then the pilot, which is standard for us, but those other funding sources to get to that number. Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
Well, and that's a good point because right now we're within about $260,000 of our full funding, and that's our gap right now. And I would ask maybe the commissioners to consider transferring the property with that consideration in mind. Anyway, I don't know what we should call it, but we've all been talking Lot O, the Lot O lofts. You know, it's Lot O has seemed to be ingrained in everybody's mind. Because we have a fresh food market lease in hand right now, we're thinking of city market lofts. I know in Lansing, there's Capital City lofts. The public wants to take an opportunity to send us ideas, or if the commissioners want to name this building, it's your purview.
We can add our two cents, but we certainly leave it to you all as the project organizers to decide on that. Corner's cute, though. We got a lot of lofts around here. We don't have a lot of corners.
That's true. That's true. I know lofts are a little too much, but yeah, that's where we're at right now. I like the project. I like where we've been. I don't like where we've been, but I like where we're ending up right now. And I think it's the right project for downtown. I think it's the only way that we can really get it funded, to be honest with you. If I were to fundraise $11 million or so, I don't think we'd get it done in a decade. And it's just a lot of money, but it's a great project. And I think the bonus to the city and downtown is that it'll have that food service. That food desert is going to be eliminated, so to speak, and it will be with a local vendor.
Yeah, in your memo, and you've touched on it a little bit, as far as the, sorry, significant dates this spring for funding, can you just touch on some of those? And like, I'm looking at the April 1st cycle for MISHDA-Lytac, but for our benefit and the public's, like, an April 1st cycle. Like, when do you hope to hear? Like, when, if things go really well, when are like those positive dates of, okay, now we have this, et cetera?
So more than likely, on the timeframe, and especially for the scoring criteria that MISHDA has out right now, this property scores well, but probably not well enough against all the competition. And there are a lot of out-of-state, other developers, for-profit that are coming into the state, so we're cognizant of that. And what I think is going to be the actual timeframe, so April 1st, okay, we're going to probably lose that opportunity because of scoring. In October, the next round for 2026 with MISHDA, there is a new clause in their underwriting criteria. It's called the Qualified Action Plan. The QAP has an additional amount of points for projects that are city-derived or urban-derived by municipality asking for a project to be built. So having put out an RFP actually is going to allow us to score points because that's what this project was generated by. And it's in that October round that I think we're going to be successful, which would give us determination in November, December of this year, so that we can get in the ground in the spring of '26.
Thank you.
Thanks for that context, too, on the grant cycles, because that adds a lot more if April doesn't come through, that there's that new clause in October. I did have a question. I was trying to, I apologize. I was trying to search my old documents and I'm not fast enough. This is 39 units now, and I know that the original proposal, the housing was not MISHDA, was not going to be MISHDA or HUD-supported. How many units was this originally going to be in the proposal?
60.
That's what I was just trying to remember. And, you know, the one-bedroom and studios are much needed at the income you're talking about, so no knock on that. But I had people ask me and I couldn't remember the numbers that had been floating around out there, so that just helps me to put it in context. Thank you.
Yes, you bet. And to that point, those were 250-square-foot studios. That's why we were able to get 60 of them. MISHDA said there was no way that they would let their marketing allow that, especially because we don't have any parking for our residents on the site. That was another concern of theirs, and they said that it just wasn't going to fly. And we're not at 39 units. We're actually now at 44 units.
Yeah, and maybe this isn't for tonight necessarily, but a takeaway and then a request, if you're willing to speak to city staff, about opportunities to collaborate with the city. And what's in my head right now is the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, which will be ongoing funding. which will be ongoing funding that the city's receiving and has to use in very, not structured, but certain categories. And like, could that be helpful for this? I don't necessarily know how, but certainly conversations. If you or your staff could work with the city for the next funding round, whenever that happens. It's annually, but whenever we, as a city, have to decide how things are being spent for 2025. And if there maybe are other opportunities as well that the city can help make it happen. Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, you noted that there was the heating element from the adjacent property on the north side that intrudes upon the city-owned property. Was there a discussion with that property owner to either relocate it or to find some solution?
Well, typically, we give notice to the owner that we're acknowledging that it's there, and that we give license for it to be there, until which point we want it removed. We don't have the purview of that, not having been the owner when it was initially installed. So again, we're trying to just be accommodating. I think it would probably have to be removed at some point because of the passageway going between the two properties. But an encroachment's an encroachment. It's against the...
It is part of the property that you purchased, and you are unable to utilize.
Right, right.
And four feet or five feet isn't a whole lot. It's not like you'd be able to make another three units appear in that space. But I do see it as part of having a complete downtown facade that you don't have major gaps between buildings.
I agree. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jackie.
Are there any opportunities to be able to focus the marketing or prioritize employees of downtown businesses?
Well, as the owner, we can give preference. And that was one of our underwriting criteria for the tenant selection, that we would give preference to downtown businesses. Being that it was prompted by the city on a city-owned property, we have that purview.
And I just wanted to ask a clarifying point on that, because we hear this come up a lot on affordable housing. We hear, we've heard in the past of people coming from all over. And I agree, and I appreciate you clarifying that because this was an RFP put out by the city, you are able to do that. As a whole, and you've dealt with Mishta and HUD and enough other groups, we cannot say it has to be a Traverse City resident or they can only work in this field for most pilots, et cetera, that we approve of, because we've gone through other projects with you before, because that is considered discriminatory housing, correct?
That's correct. That's why the term preference is used. And actually, the lawyers that we've talked to say that's an appropriate use of language. Even in your pilot ordinance that you put in, that our agreement says that we will give preference to the residents of which that municipality resides.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.
Sure.
All right, any other questions? Okay, we'll let you roll on to the next.
Final question.
Okay.
I was excited by the, I saw it as an innovative approach to have the very small studio apartments, but you said Mishta doesn't want to move forward with that. Is that an opinion by Mishta specific for Northern Michigan? Or is that their view statewide, that something like that is untenable for the future?
It's statewide. And there is a building in downtown Detroit that has that model of cohousing, where it's kitchen down the hallway and living room, and you just have a cubicle or have a room to live in. It's having trouble getting leased up. It's gone almost to bankruptcy. Mishta won't touch that.
And yeah, and Mishta won't touch it, and a lot of federal agencies won't, because that is a lot of common shared space that the owner or management has to be accountable for what happens in those shared spaces. And they've moved away from funding on that kind of level so that people can have individual places to live of their own. So that has been told me by several people at the state agencies, so.
I do have one other question. So back to the tunnel. In the closing documents that are in escrow, or that's my understanding, not an attorney, has Homestretch written in an easement that runs with the property then? So this is in perpetuity?
I don't anticipate doing that. I think it's going to exist as it is by virtue of the fact that it is. I suppose if we did that someday, we wouldn't be able to put up a barrier, or there wouldn't be some way of mechanism. If there is some real egregious misuse or abuse, that we could shut it off. I don't know legally, but our attorney, Lane Plamondon, and he would probably advise us against putting an easement, but I'll follow what they legally asked us to do.
And there's not anything in the closing documents relative to an easement?
Right.
All right, because I'm still having a hard time understanding, like, what is holding Homestretch to the requirement of providing this tunnel? And for how long?
I think the idea that we're trying to do something for the community and not against any businesses, and we're pro-business as much as we can be. It's the business community that keeps our city viable, and we want to protect that as much as we want to house people.
No, and that's fine. I know you have to be a good neighbor, but we, and this isn't, now I'm kind of just addressing the public. But we had two properties on our bayfront, one at the east end, one at the west end, where our neighbors were using it. It's public property, but our neighbors were using it. And so we, as a city commission, decided, no, we want to kind of reassert our ownership of that property. And to me, this is no different in Lot O. Now it's out of our hands largely, but neighbors are deciding it's public property. They're going to use it. But it's still owned, was owned by the city entirely. And we have sold it or have an agreement to sell it to Homestretch. And yet, at the same time, we've essentially, if not by fact and law, conveyed a property interest to the neighbors to the north. And that, to me, it's very different than what we did with the bayfront property. So to me, the inconsistency is troubling. And hopefully, there's opportunity in the coming year for the commission to look at our policies on disposing of city-owned property.
Understood.
Any other questions on this? Go ahead, Mitch.
Yes, I have seen the floor plans. I know the roof won't be occupiable space, but would there be an opportunity to provide rooftop access so that you could have, I guess, a patio area with some deck chairs that residents could enjoy a nice day such as we have today?
My focus is housing, and as efficiently and expeditiously as possible. But I'm sure structurally, my worry is the height restriction, that a parapet, go ahead.
I remember that being the discussion two years ago, too.
Right, so there is, the allowable height of the highest occupied floor is 45 feet. So we would, there are ways, I suppose, we could look at stepping the building back and going up, but then there is an overall height limit of 60 feet as well. So it's something we could look at, but I think in an effort to, in an eye on cost and effort of simplicity, I'm not sure it makes sense for this project.
Any other questions on Lot O? Okay, we'll let you keep rolling on there with the Beitner-Woodmere properties on number four here for us.
Okay, thank you, Mary. So you saw this in your packet, that we've proposed an 18-unit development. It's about $4.6 million. We're partnering with Goodwill for some of the permanent supportive housing units. Now, we have a potential for funding with Mishta. I'm going to explore that a little bit more. There's some environmental things that we have to work through. It's possible that it won't go through a Mishta project, or it won't go, I know, a Lytec-funded project. But there is another division within Mishta called My Neighborhood, and we've been successful with that on a lot of smaller-scale projects, which is what this is. The rental units will fall between 60% and 120% AMI, with, again, an average a little bit higher. Because this isn't tax credit, it'll probably come in at about 65%. There's a funding timeline, and this one, too, would like to have support for a 4% pilot. This is a shot of an aerial of the property. Before we get into our site plan, I just wanted to disclose, and I'm sure the city probably is well aware, there was a Phase 1 done in 2022, paid for by the city. The building was demolished at one point. But at the point of demolition, there was the existence of buried asbestos and transite sighting. It was agreed to at the time, apparently, when it was demolished, that they wouldn't go any deeper into the soils to remediate that. So it is still existing. It has the potential presence of environmental impact, obviously, and there is some urban fill. And there is arsenic in the soils at three locations based on the Phase 1 that was done in '22, and it does exceed GCC standards. So it does have to be removed. So there will be an element of Eagle application on this one as well. And the next slide is our site plan, which you've seen. But I want Dusty Christensen from Mansfield to go over that.
Dusty Christensen with Mansfield Land Use Consultants. The site plan here represents the development of the 18 units in two townhome buildings running east to west across the site. Just to orient everybody, plan left is Woodmere. The site sits almost directly across from the library. To the north of the site are the existing railroad tracks, and then Beitner Street fronts the property on the south. What we attempted to do is use the model that Homestretch has used pretty successfully across the region with these townhouse units, and align those two buildings east to west and create kind of a central courtyard between those two buildings. So the front doors to the units face out onto a shared green space that's connected to the public sidewalk with a series of internal walks. We have a parking lot on the rear or east side of the site with 13 spaces, one of which is an accessible space that accesses off of Beitner Street. And that's essentially it for the site design itself. Some of the other elements that you see on the plan are anticipated rain gardens to accommodate roof stormwater that would sit between the sidewalk and the buildings, as shallow retention areas and infiltration basins with native plantings. And then we're assuming that all of our parking lot stormwater will be handled with an infiltrator system under the parking surface itself. Project is served by municipal utilities, simple sewer and water leads. It's a relatively straightforward solution to this site. I don't have anything else to add but can answer any questions about the site plan right now before I hand it back to John.
Sure, I have a question. And I said this during the RFP process. How far would that north building or set of townhouses be from the railroad tracks?
Well, the tracks are central in the right-of-way, which is about 100 feet. So that property line that you see running east-west to the north of that building is 50 feet from the tracks. And the building itself is, at its closest point, about five feet off the property line.
And so one of the things that we put in the RFP, though fellow commissioners chose to soften the wording, was taking into consideration noise dampening. What kind of plans are there for that? And also, we'll continue with that first, and then I'll have another question.
Okay. Noise dampening, I can't speak to myself. I know John.
I saw John get up, so he might be ready.
John and the project architect have been working on that.
Yeah, that's top of mind, Mary. And I've been thinking about that for quite a while. And so to that end, I just want to look at this next slide. As you said, Dusty, this is our townhouse design. This is similar to what it would look like if we were to be able to build out the property. And then going further on that, this two-story townhome style, it does have so many benefits if you didn't have city water. It has benefits to people living side by side. It's flexible in nature. It can accommodate up to one to four occupants. Again, this is two bedrooms upstairs with a living room down below and a kitchen. We can convert this into studios, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. We've used industrial components that are factory-made and then assembled on-site. We have great indoor air quality because of an air exchange system that we use. It's called an energy recovery ventilation system. They are very tight and well insulated, so only about a 7,500 BTU furnace is required. There is no furnace that makes that small of a BTU-rated furnace. We have an all-in-one electric heat pump that we've sourced from Italy that is similar to, if you were in a hotel, they're called a PTAC or a plug-in-the-wall that sits in the hotel. These are actually heat pumps. They're very quiet, and they can heat and cool these units without any problem. They run about 8,500 to 9,000 BTUs, half a ton for cooling. And this is 100% electric, as we're specifying it right now.
John, I'm going to bring it back to my question, though. Which is, I know all of this, I know this was the intention. This is 50 feet from a railroad track. That's what some of them, well, between a few hundred feet, 100 to 250. Everything's very close. I live right in that same corridor of the train there, much further off. I know how loud it can get. And that was why I was asking about what is being done about sound dampening. When this discussion was had initially, some of my fellow commissioners said, well, people can choose not to live there. But now we're talking about putting supportive housing in here as well. And so I do have major concerns. And I appreciate the bells and whistles that are in there. By that, I mean for affordable housing, not trying to say you are overspending on things that aren't worth it. But this is a very unique property in that sense. We already know from other bids and your own statements that Mishta funding is going to be difficult because of its location. So I would really appreciate a direct answer to that, kind of what your plans are, thoughts are on mitigating, at least for the north building. I mean...
Thank you, Mary. I'm going to introduce Michael Doriga, the architect.
Thank you.
All right. My name's Michael Doriga. I'm a Traverse City resident. So to address the concerns about the sound design, so the wall construction is going to be sipped panel walls. There are assemblies with an RC channel with the sound clip and BAT insulation. This particular assembly goes from anywhere from 48 to 52 STC, which is the amount of decibels that is reduced as it goes through the assembly. By adding an additional layer of gypsum on each side of the assembly, this can get up to 58 STC. So that means that whatever sound is coming from the outside gets reduced by 58 decibels as it comes in.
And have you done any sound testing at that site to see what that might still be adjusted?
So typically, the Phase 1s don't take that into consideration, but there's a non-scope item that we would add to the Phase 1 study that will give us the day and night noise levels. And those haven't been established for this site yet. We have to do that study if we get control of the site. We would well afford to spend the money to get that Phase 1 with those non-scope items entered into the study. So we're on that path. This is what we're proposing. We think it would achieve that, but until we have those actual ratings. And I'll point out that, yes, it's a railroad track. Most of the vibration is more important than the noise in a lot of cases. Being that we're in a city setting, a slow-moving train probably won't emit as much, but we can't wait to get those ratings so we can answer your questions.
And I appreciate that. And I do want to acknowledge that the train does move slowly through, so there's not the shaking of like a, living next to the L in Chicago or something. So that was my concern with the sound. So I appreciate that, and her, thank you.
Any inbound or outbound train along that section of track does need to make...
It goes very slow.
A 180. So it will be going less than five miles an hour.
Yes.
And also, in addition to that, there are window assemblies that also can get up to 54 STC. So that's 54 decibels. That'll reduce any sound from the outside coming in.
So when you say they can be, that would be part of your plan, though, for this, for the construction? Okay, thank you. Other questions? Go ahead, Mitch.
Yes, there's along the northern edge, not just the railway, but multiple utility lines. Has there been an examination of burying or otherwise relocating those electrical and other utility lines?
Based on my experience, within proximity to the primary power lines, we have a 15-foot radius that we have to maintain. On this site, I don't see that as being problematic. In other developments, we've had to actually go on from a gable-end roof to a hip roof so that we could maintain that clearance. But the site, I've been out there, and there is no problem with that distance requirement. We're well within that. so that we could maintain that clearance, but the site, I've been out there, and there is no, there is no problem with that distance requirement. We're well within that barrier.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, when we, as the city commission, we're first made aware that Homestretch had put in a proposal on this property. I was a little surprised. My initial reaction was like, oh, what about Lot O? And we've heard about Lot O in an update. So, that's still my, I guess, main concern, is just Homestretch's capacity to continue working as hard as you have been on Lot O and to be able to take on an additional development.
And I, and I'm cognizant of that, and I appreciate that comment, because at the beginning of the presentation, I said I have grown this organization to the point where we do have the capacity, and I am comfortable moving forward. I think on the low-income housing tax credit projects, that is not our forte. We are a small-scale developer of five contiguous counties. What I recognize, though, is that we have to keep moving forward, and I do have to grow the organization to the point where we have the capacity. So, having those relationships, like in Elk Rapids, we're partnered with Benjamin Ide. Him and Jesse from our team are working together on that project. I and Wallach are working together on Lot O. The two of us, Jesse and I, will concentrate on Beitner and all the other surrounding properties. If we get to the point where we can't handle this capacity-wise, we'll let you know. But as far as I'm concerned, we'll build affordable housing anywhere, anytime, anyhow.
Thank you.
Other questions from commissioners on this? Being aware of, of the timing on this, I'm just going to say that as we continue to have this conversation, I personally am going to be looking for the fundraising timeline to more match our city budget seasons. So, looking at 20, end of our '25, '26 budget for at least a funding update with possibility of extension, that'll be what I'll be advocating for. I, I appreciate the, the effort that's been put into this site. We know it's been a problematic site. At the end of the day, just for the public's knowledge, we had two bidders. One withdrew. You are the ones who stuck to it, and I do appreciate that, but I also know that this particular spot with what it's around it, and amount of affordable housing around it, how close it is to railroad tracks, how close it is to a 24/7 garage, and the sewage treatment plant, which I live near, too, so I think that can be a little overhyped, but that still is part of the considerations for a lot of funding. I, I want us to have built into anything, if we are to move forward with this, a lot more fundraising oversight and check-ins. It's been two years since we saw Lot O. I, you know, you're moving down the path, and I think that'll come before us and probably be very positive, but I don't want to go a year and a half, two years, without checking in, and I appreciate that you say you would come to us, but there's obviously been some major developments with Lot O that we're just being updated on now. So, I would like to see some, if we're going to move forward with this as a commission, one of my stipulations, at least, will be to have some built-in kind of check-ins and, and updates as part of this, if that goes forward. Mitch, you have your hand.
And to those points, I would like to remind folks of the letter that was sent by the Housing Commission in lieu of a bid, pointing out the potential difficulty in obtaining MISTDA funding for this project due to the railroad proximity, the equipment yard right next door, and multiple other constraints on the property.
Yep, and I think Mr. Simpson has, has acknowledged that in this presentation as we move forward with that, so I do appreciate that, so.
You're welcome. Thank you, and my apologies for not keeping you up to date more. We had a transition between city commission, and there was a lot.
No, it's, and that's why I say I want it built in. It's not on anyone in particular. It's not on our staff. It's not on yours.
Right.
Things like this go. We just had an update on Fish Pass. That's been six years now. So, not that that's our last, only update on it, but we know how things can go and how quickly a year can slip through time for everybody, so that would just be what I'd be looking for, just to give everybody a heads up as we're going forward. This is an open meeting, so.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you so much. Two housing updates. We always love those, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And just, sorry, this is for public. I didn't want you to stop from your cleanup. Just as I had mentioned, these are items three and four. If anybody has public comment on either or both of these, please feel free to address the podium right now.
Just read, um, hopefully, Homestretch does what they say, affordable housing. I think the fact that, you know, there's example of, of the county with the WADA group. The WADA group went ahead and said, oh, we're going to do affordable housing. That's glamour and everything else. So, I've got a friend who lives over in Anika Place 1, and her utilities are not included. Her promise was from WADA group that she would only have to pay electricity, and that was it. Well, now she's going to have to pay not only the electricity, now she's going to have to pay water and sewer. And so, one thing that was stayed with, with her building was it was too closed-in. It was so closed-in that ventilation in that building would have to be ran 24/7. And if she's paying for electricity, and she goes out to her community manager and says, hey, you know, is there any compensation for this? And if that community manager says, well, you, you don't pay so much, sorry. I would hate for somebody who would go into a situation like with a Beitner project to go in there. They, they, they get in there, oh, it's so great and everything else, and promoted. And they get in there and they get stuck, and they can't afford to move out of there because they're only trying to survive on their income that they have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item?
I am Matt Bouchore, and I own the property just north of Lot O, or two, two properties north of Lot O. And I just wanted to, again, thank the commission for kind of keeping in mind, and I, I liked Jackie Anderson's comment earlier when it came to the, the fish weir and her consideration for the other property owners that were involved with the whole project or affected by it. Likewise, we are, and I wanted to thank the commission for, commissioners, you know, who understood that Traverse City needs affordable housing, but it doesn't have to be at the cost of other businesses, and with Lot O especially, if the access wasn't given, and thank you, John, very much for being willing to work with us on it, and we are willing to work with you on it, too. We would have to shutter some businesses, and that's kind of detrimental to the whole future at Traverse City. If the commission puts one business or one entity above the whole city, you're going to have less people moving into the city. You're going to have less businesses moving into the city. You'll lose businesses, and it'll just be detrimental to the whole, whole future, so thank you again, and thank you, John.
Thank you for that public comment. And handshake after. That's why we were a little delayed if people couldn't see that.
Hello, Scott Parkers, 124 Cast, the building right next to Matt's. We'd like to thank the city, too, for working with us and all working together, and I will be more than happy to work with John and Parkin. John's been great to work with. I don't think there'll be a problem in Mr. Treadwell, that heating unit on the side of the building, we'll do what we have to do, but I'm not even sure it's functional anymore. I don't know exactly what it's, yeah, so it's, either way, we'll take care of it, but we appreciate it, but we're going to gather on this, and we look forward to the project and working with John.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Or these items, I should say, sorry. Are you doing public comment, John, or do you just want to do some follow-up after? Well, we'll end public comment, then you'll have a three-minute time limit, so you can come up now if you want.
If, if it's permissible.
It is, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just can't express enough how much, you know, we're focused on trying to help the community, and that's really what it's about. We're not trying to, you know, come in and make a lot of money. We're trying to cover our expenses. We're trying to work with people, not against people, so I think that's important to know, that, you know, a local nonprofit does have that mindset, and that we could use as much of support as we give back. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's, any other comments on the item? All right, well, that ends our study session for tonight. Now, we're going to have general public comment, so anything under the sun. It could be something we discussed tonight. Could be, I don't know, talk about the weather today. It was very nice, so please feel free to approach the podium.
So, Justin, um, I hate to tell you this, but people are not moving out of Traverse City. We make it on so many lists, you know, being a great town and everything else, underneath the sun. I really, really doubt people are leaving in, in strides and rows out of Traverse City into somewhere else. Traverse City will just keep on getting more people in, and that's just a fact of life. You know, I, the businesses shutter, yes, they do. Is, does it suck? Yeah, it does suck. But does it mean there's not going to be any other developments or any other new businesses that might pop up? So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general public comment? Any final comments from commissioners? All right, with that, we are adjourned. I think there might be a signature or two out there. If you need them, feel free to come up to the podium, or up to the dais, and we'll all sign for you.